Today's one, ten.
Mm-hmm.
January tenth. For a planning commission meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. McGary.
Present.
Mr. Walkie.
Here.
Mrs. Erlich.
Here.
Mr. Titterington.
Here.
Mayor Oda.
Here.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Here.
Mrs. Emrick.
Here.
Mr. Emrick, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. All members are present.
Okay, they say on the business, we've got the reorganization, election of chairman and vice chairman for two thousand twenty-four. Is there any actions wishing to be undertaken by the commission?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that you continue as the chair and Mr. Walkie continue as vice chair.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Um, any discussion? Mr. Walkie, are you willing to serve?
I'm gonna do it till I get it right.
I also am willing to serve. Roll call, please.
Mr. Walkie.
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Mayor Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Emrick.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Motion is adopted, you are a.
Okay, the minutes for the last meeting were submitted. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? There he goes, our motion for adoption.
Make a motion and approve.
Second.
And second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's your doctor. First item is the historical district application for nine eleven, nine through eleven West Main Street, Mayfair Building. The item was tabled at the last meeting. If we're gonna have any discussion, it needs to be removed from the table.
I'll make a motion where you remove it from the table.
Second.
A motion and a second, remove from the table. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Erlich.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Emrick.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Walkie.
Yes.
Motion is adopted, item is taken from the table.
Um, maybe staff could reiterate their concerns?
Uh, yes. Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, this application was tabled at the last meeting due to, uh, the inset was originally approved on November twenty-second to be a three-inch inset for the brick infill of four windows on this building. It was completed with a three-quarter inch inset on the infill. And so, due to that, we recommended denial of the three-quarter inch infill unless a suitable option was presented by the applicant or a reason why the three-quarter inch infill was done by the applicant. And it was tabled so the applicant can bring his mason here, which I believe he's here today.
Okay, was the applicant would like to address the commission?
Yeah, um, so.
Yeah, we need also a name and address.
Name and address.
Names.
Oh, Wes Martin. Um, what address of the building or personal address?
Uh, building aside.
Eleven and nine West Main Street.
My name's Doug Schoenig.
Thank you.
You can go ahead, Doug.
And Doug here is gonna demonstrate why he believes that three-quarters is the best option and the option that he's used throughout the duration of his career. And he thinks it's the best option for the safety and overall health of the, you know, that facade in the building.
Go ahead.
Okay, we just, uh, in my experience doing this since I've been eighteen years old, there has been situations where they've asked for deeper infills. And we've been able to show them that with my three-quarter inch, we can get additional mortar in between the two or actually existing in our infill, which will be a stronger bond and a better weather barrier. And then at the bottom where you have the roll lock and we crossed over the roll lock, we have more of a new brick infill over that roll lock instead of actually only getting possibly half to five-eighths of an inch of mortar in there to keep out the rain and the snow. We just never had done that deep a infill. So, Wes had sent me something and we were busy with the side wall. So, common practice is how I did it. And I just missed his text message that said it was a three-inch infill. But with the way we did it, I think it's stronger mortar-wise and better weather tight for the state of Ohio.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Was this a request by the staff or was this proposed originally as three-inch?
It was proposed originally. That was the original acceptance by the planning commission.
But it was proposed by?
The applicant, correct.
By them on the, to go with the three-inch?
That's correct, yep.
Is there a standard that you, that you're familiar with as far as?
For the building? Yeah, uh, he has obviously more experience than I do with that. So, there's no standard that we're aware of.
The, um, when you look around town, there's a lot, there's probably a variance of, I don't know how deep, but a lot of flush ones that are out there that don't have any relief whatsoever. So, I'm not sure really what was more appropriate. It, it, my concern is, is it was submitted, was submitted and approved and then it wasn't put in that way. That was, that was, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't a matter of commission try to dictate what the best methodology would have been. So, any other comments by any of the members of the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, for me, it wasn't a safety issue, it wasn't a weatherproofing issue. It was that my initial vote in favor of the three inches was that I felt that it would provide enough relief knowing that anytime you fill in old, old brick with newer brick and it's flush or almost flush with the rest of the surface, it looks, in my opinion, more like, you know, you're just placarding over. And so, by having the three-inch relief, I felt like that would show just some very, enough variation as you're driving by, traveling eastbound into the square. Now that it's three-quarter of an inch, you really don't notice, at least in a vehicle, coming in at, and hopefully slowing down, but coming in at twenty-five to thirty miles an hour, what you see is you simply see three or four patches in the side of a historic building. That was my concern. And so, when I voted in favor of tabling, I was hoping, and maybe they've still got this, that we could hear some alternatives as to how to provide some kind of at least cosmetic relief if in fact it's that important that we keep only the three-quarter inch. Because I get the weather, I don't want, I don't want this, I don't want weather to erode a building that's historic any more than anybody else does. But I would like to see some alternatives that maybe show the perception of some relief where we don't have it now.
I agree with your comment. The deep relief was, doesn't make it look just like a patch that's, like a patch on a highway, you know, where you're trying to make a match, but it doesn't quite match. Is there, the owner had, is there any alternative that you could, you could come back with, with a, with a way to define a relief maybe?
So, I suppose we could, we could, we could paint the infills with the urban bronze to which the rest of the character of the building is painted. I don't particularly love that option. We could also paint the border of that window character, you know, the trim. Then again, I think that does more distraction from the original character and look of the building than the three-quarter inset does. Because the three-quarter inset, yes, you know, it is more flush with the building. Obviously, there is, there is a difference between that and the three-quarter. And the three-quarter would allow you to see a more of an indentation. But you still have the, that ledge character on the bottom, that sloped brick, and you still have the character above. So, there's still variation in that brick, the, you know, how they, you know, how masons character, you know, they have to break out a window different than they do the rest of the building. And that's still all that remains. So, when you're, when you're driving by, I think, if that catches your eye, you'll, you'll see it. And if you walk by and, if I walk, if I ask a stranger to walk by and tell me where the, you know, the four windows were on that wall, I think more times than not, they'd be able to, they'd be able to point those out. I don't argue the fact that the three-inch would show more of that indentation. But, yeah, so, I mean, there are, I mean, we can dress it up, paint it out. I mean, I don't know to show that better. But, you know, I think those, those pull us away from that original character of the windows more than anything personally.
Chair, can I have a?
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's gonna look like windows removed no matter what you do. I'm not sure that three inches versus three-quarter inch is really gonna make any difference. It's still gonna look like a patched window. What are you thinking? What kind of relief are you thinking?
Well, first of all, I'm thinking that three inches is four times as much relief as three-quarter inch.
It still looks like a patched window.
If I did the math, and I think from a visual standpoint, you're gonna notice three-inch relief more than, much more than you're gonna notice the three-quarter inch. I was kinda hoping that maybe your mason might have some ideas as to how to, you know, without painting, because I know our guidelines, we don't really like to paint original brick that's, has never been painted before. And that's federal and state as well as our guidelines. Rather than doing that, though, are there options for any kind of, any ways for brick to be put on around the windows to maybe frame it with just the exposed brick to provide a little bit more relief?
You're talking about maybe cutting the brick like a quarter-inch face and putting that on the perimeter so it's protruding out away from?
I would hope it'd be more than a quarter inch. But yes, something along those lines where you're, you know, you're cutting them, I don't know, long ways. I'll have to look back at the pictures to see how they're, you know, how they are. But something to show some relief so that you have some kind of a cutoff between the old brick and the new brick. So, yeah, you know, you had to patch windows and it happens a hundred-plus years later. But it's not just going from old to new to old. You know, it's just one.
Yeah, and I can let Doug comment on that. My concern with that is the character above the window frame, it lies flush on the, you know, on the building. On the lower end, you do have, you have that angled shelf at the bottom. And that protrudes out ever so slightly. But if, you know, if we bring out the sides a little bit, in my head, it would be hard to bring out the top as well to make that look right and to make that look authentic. To me, that would be, that would, again, I think that might steer us away from natural more than anything else would. Doug, do you have any ideas?
Well, the top would create another weather ledge. That's what we do is we try with our freeze stall cycles in Ohio. We want to push our product. We think it's better than stucco or any E-MS. But it does create a weather ledge. So, with our freeze stall cycle, if the board would decide to do that, then we would have to come up with some kind of mortar wash to go ahead and try to steel that. It would have to be a hardened material so it wouldn't crack over time.
Mr. Chair, question, have the original proposal been three-quarters of an inch? How would you have responded?
We probably would have made a recommendation for it only because we didn't have standards that say it would be in violation of any of our design standards. It would be a purely an aesthetic item at that point in time.
So, you would not have objected?
I don't think we would have objected.
Just for the windows here, there is, this is where the staircase is going. So, about three of these windows are already covered by the staircase. It wasn't there?
Partially. I mean, there's still gonna be, you're still gonna see a lot of them.
And one window is unoriginal. Well, the one window at the bottom was an old door frame that we got approval to convert into a window and then approval again to fill it back in because it was, you know, a fire issue.
And that was, that was my next comment to Jordan was that there's gonna be a staircase there. How much of those are gonna be covered up? It's not like we want those windows to stick out. They're not going to be a main feature. And it's not on the main street, it's on a side street.
I don't know that I'd agree with that, Andy. You are gonna see it as you're driving, you do see it already as you're driving.
I agree. But it's not on the crowded plaza side. It's not on the side where people, most people park. If you're sitting in Mesa and looking out, I suppose you might look at the windows.
Well, it's probably the dilemma with any brick. When you do, when you do try to close it up, whether you have relief or not, everybody's gonna know you closed the window up. So, there's no hiding that to begin with. Is there any action that the board would like to take on this?
I'm gonna move to approve the way, the way it looks from the.
We have a motion to approve the three-quarter inch?
Second.
I have a second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Emrick?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
No.
Motion is adopted.
Can I make one other comment?
Yes.
Um, if, if, if we asked them to do something around the outside of these windows, then are we also asking them to do the same thing around all the other windows and doorways? Just a comment.
I'd be concerned that, now we're talking about some design standards that don't necessarily exist.
Yeah.
Okay, next item is the historical district for the two-twenty West Main Street. Tabled at the last meeting. So, we do discuss, remove from the table. If desired by commission.
I'm open to move to the table.
Yeah, motion removed.
Second.
Second.
All right, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Emrick?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, motion is adopted, item is taken from table.
Okay, um, let's see, again, reiterate the issue for the board.
Sure. Yeah, this was tabled at the last meeting to look at alternative options to the front gables and the second, uh, four porch on the west side. We did not receive an estimate that specifically outlined repair of the items in question. But we did receive an estimate for the removal of the existing balcony and porch and replace it with a new balcony and match existing finishes. And construct an additional canopy as shown in the rendering that I provided you prior to the meeting. The estimate total was a hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. To summarize, we recommended denial on the porch removal and infill of the split ridge on the front facade facing Main Street due to the alterations not meeting the design manual sections two-point-four and two-point-nine. And contributing features referenced in the OHI form were being altered. There was part of the original application that we did recommend approval of. That was the window replacement, additional ridge to the rear of the building only and the paint. This was based on the original windows referenced in the OHI form were being maintained and already altered windows were being replaced. The paint colors can be found in other areas of our historic district. And the ridge expansion to the rear is minimal in nature and does not impact the district.
Okay, so there's two items. Is there a representative?
Mike Twist, two-twenty-six South Margaret Street, Troy, Ohio.
Could you explain a little bit the renovation proposal?
So, yeah, at the end of last planning commission, one of the ideas, I think that Patrick, you had suggested was do we extend, you know, as an option to extend the roof line, if you will, for that first-story porch over to the corner and then take the downspout from the front, keeping the two gables and take the downspout over to that porch. So, this estimate is really for a reconstruction of the first and second-story porch along with the construction of that addition, the additional extension of that first-floor porch. The main reason that the right, the price is so exorbitant is because all of those pieces on the second-story porch, that number one, the materials are pretty deteriorated. So, we'd have to replace them and those are all custom parts. It's not like you just go to Lowe's and buy a lot of those spindles and the components that are part of that second-story porch. So, that estimate is not necessarily a repair, it's a complete replacement of the first and second floor porches. You can also see in one of the exhibits that we sent, kind of a dash line of if that port, second-story porch was to be reconstructed, an approximation of how tall that, that rail would need to be to be co-compliant. And I'm gonna pass this around, Tom just gave me this. So, this is the view from that porch. Which really shows that if the porch is to be reconstructed to current code, that opening from the top of the rail to the underside of the existing soffit is really gonna be about maybe eighteen inches, twelve to eighteen inches, something like that. Also.
This is existing?
That's existing. So, the rail, Jim, you would need to raise that rail up to meet the current code. Yeah, that's the existing view. And then in some of the exhibits that we passed out, we did a side-by-side. So, there should be a photo or an image that shows the double gable stain. And then there is also an exhibit of what we're proposing with fixing the ridge line, putting the decorative line up top and then keeping, and then rebuilding the first-floor porch.
Again, do we know if that porch is taken off from the building right that faces?
I hate to say odd.
Faces Main Street?
I don't know, we don't know the date it was taken off.
Yeah, it, it, that's kind of the, that strikes me as kind of the key item, particularly for that double gable up above it. Do there, comments or concerns with the commission?
Well, we're talking about two different things, Jim. Like we, you mentioned the double gable. If we're talking about that porch on the, what, the west elevation and the fact that the dotted lines mean that the railing has to go up, my question to Mike is, this hundred and thirty thousand dollar estimate, when I, when I look at this packet, this page that you gave us that has the dotted lines on it, that also includes what looks like is extending that?
Yes.
Front porch out. Is that part of the hundred and thirty thousand too?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, I don't remember me being the one bringing up extending the roof, but it was a pretty comprehensive discussion. So, if that part wasn't extended out and instead that, that downspout went, just went down behind the bush or whatever and then attached into our stormwater right there, that would cut off a significant amount of cost and make that simpler.
Yeah, I know, we'd have to, I'd have to go back to our team and verify how much that portion of the, the bulk of the cost, the large percentage of that cost estimate, and remember, it's a cost estimate. We don't really know what we're getting into because we're guessing that the majority of that second-floor porch is not salvageable because it's just rotting and it's deteriorated to a point of like end of life.
When you say the second.
Yeah, the second.
That, that, that one?
The one that has the dash line, yeah, exactly. And we don't know what other water mitigate, mitigate, water infiltration would be on the first-floor roof structure as well. So, the bulk of the cost is really associated with the existing first-floor porch and the second-story porch. That extension would be minimal percentage of the cost. But if we need a true breakdown of that, then we can, we could get.
No, I just don't wanna mix up the two issues. I mean, you know.
Yes.
From my standpoint, the, my continued concern is going from the twin towers to the single gable front elevation. That side porch is less, regardless of which porch we're talking about, is less of a concern to me than.
The, the double gable.
Yeah, double gable.
Yeah, which I think in the one exhibit we showed last time, we had the gutter coming down and kicking over to the left and going down the, what direction would it be? Northeast side of the, of the house.
So, where on this picture is the gutter going here? I see it coming here. I just don't know where it goes from there.
Right here.
Yeah, it would go down to the roof. Yeah, it would go down to the roof, that extension.
I like this option of extending that lower because you keep this right at the front. Well, if you look at this, these two pictures. This totally changes the look. Extending it this way to the front kind of keeps that feature there.
Yeah, we could, we would, regardless, we would keep that feature in either way, Mayor. You know.
This is. So, you're not saying we wouldn't do that?
We would, this side here would look just like, would look just like that.
Okay. I thought this was the, the dress is stained right here. That's not this.
It is, it is. But the detail of those, you know how they have the diagonals in there? I mean, we're just not showing it. Yeah.
But on the suggestion, this is the removal of the double gable.
Correct, correct.
And running the outside over.
That would all go away, Jim, because it wouldn't, it wouldn't be necessary.
If you, if you modify the porch to this manner and you left the double gables up.
Then you could either run it to the right or you could run it to the left.
Now, in the case of running it to the right or left, you'd be spreading down along the edge of the house.
Exactly, yep.
Let me say, when you're saying the right side, are you saying the east side of the building?
The northwest corner.
Northwest corner, so, on the, on the west elevation.
Yes.
As opposed to the east elevation. And see, if.
Our thought, Patrick, on that was to run it to the east side because that's not as visible, the northeast corner of the house.
I don't disagree. I was gonna say that, that to me, if it was gonna run all the way down, then the east side would be much less visible.
Okay, uh, commission might consider handling this in two different issues separately. Okay, so the first issue then would be the, in the.
issue because if the preference is maybe to run the downspout down the east side, then that negates the necessity of extending the porch out to the northwest corner.
Correct. That's a, that's a good point.
So maybe we address the gutter issue
So we'll handle it first, the gutter and the double gable first, and then we'll discuss the removal of the porch and modification of the porch. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Do you guys have a preference to which way the gutter goes?
If we need, if the gutter's required and the double gable has to stay, then, yeah, we're going to want it on the northeast corner, for sure.
But we'd run down the east wall, not the north wall.
Correct. As, as much as
It would wrap a little bit like it does here.
Yes, yeah, on the other side.
That's not wrong. I like that.
Tom Clacks, 450 Meadowwood Drive, the one that's paying the bills for this project. To your question, Mayor, my initial reaction is we don't want a gutter running down the front of the building. It's a beautiful building. To run it down and over, it's going to run right in front of the dentil and work across that second story. It's going to take away from it. You know, everything being proposed that we ran through the city was to mitigate water problems, fix problems that have been there for a long time. I realize there, it's resulting in some changes to the building, but it really isn't meant to take away from the building, it's just meant to lengthen the life of the building. When that thing was built in the late 1800s, you know, they weren't thinking it was going to last 100 years. And things have changed, materials have changed, and that's all. Everything that Mike put together on all the changes, the back rub, the porches, all is to solve water problems in the building. So I, my choice would be not to even have a gutter, you know, and go with the, do away with the twin gables.
So, what's your?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Commission, any comments or recommendations?
In my opinion, if you lose that double gable, you're losing quite an interesting, our particular, part of that house.
Is that a motion?
Nope.
No.
Which is my opinion.
Will you make a motion?
I, I, is this only about the
This is only about the gables first and then the porch
No, there's something about the downspout has to be in that.
Well, the downspout's part of the gable.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion that we retain the double gable and remove the downspout to alleviate the water problem. Is that a motion?
To the east side?
Yes.
Does he get that suit?
No, I didn't because everything took away.
It's a motion to retain the double gable and put the downspout over to the northeast, I believe it was.
East.
East.
Correct.
To the east.
To the east.
I'll second that.
Okay.
What's the order for discussion? Prior to, second, or after?
We have, we already have a second, so.
We have a second, right?
So yet, yes, it'll be
I've got one, just one question.
Keeping, keeping the double gable and removing
I'm, the proposal you've got was a single gable. The windows aren't recessed any, any longer. Is that just because you're bringing, you know? See, the windows are recessed up in the
They're remaining, Jim.
Those, we're not taking them up. They're staying up. Okay, so that face, that face, that's, yeah, it's kind of, otherwise it would look like you're bringing the windows out.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any of the discussion?
I do have a question, Mr. Twist. How does, how does, what does this look like for the water flow?
Well, the, to Tom's point, if we put the single gable, it, it solves the water issue coming down the front of the building.
But if we retain the historical architectural structure, which
It is, in my opinion, it's not going to look as good with the gutter coming down the front, you know, and going over to the side. And, you know, the gutter can do its job, but as we know, all aluminum gutters at times, they only last so long and sometimes they get clogged and that type of thing. So, you know, it's not a, it's, it's a residential rainwater solution, not a commercial, we don't really deal with rainwater in the same way. But this was a residence at some point, I believe, I believe so, or at least the construction type was a residential construction type when it was originally built.
Mr. Chairman, this question for the architect and the owner. Would, would the downspout resolve the drainage issues?
For the front?
Yes.
Double gable, it would work. Currently, there's nothing there, so it's just, it's just coming
So it's a matter of aesthetics at this point.
Right. Right now, the water is just running, it comes down and goes out.
Yep.
I mean, so we were trying to trap the water so it's not running down in front of the building or anything like that.
Disperse it to the sides, yeah. But to your point, Larry, yeah, it would be aesthetics, not, it would solve the problem of the water just for the front. That's the issue we're discussing at this point. The other side's a completely different issue.
To, to me, it's a very close call. I think that it would be attractive with the double gable, and I think it would be attractive and fit into the neighborhood with a single gable. So, and quite frankly, my strong suit is not aesthetics. So that's why I'm relying on, on the other folks on this one and, and your shelves. But you say that that's what it boils down to, it has nothing to do with whether the drainage will work any better or any worse.
Correct, yeah.
It's going to be something to maintain.
It'll be more of a maintenance issue with, with having a, a new gutter. There'll be a maintenance component to it.
Because, because the gutter's running such a long run sideways, you know, if stuff gets, if weeds get down in there, it's not going to flow. It's not a straight shoot shot down, you know? And by doing what Mike has recommended or proposed, it matches the other two gables. I mean, both one on the left and one on the east are single, single gables. And the trim work all matches up and everything else. It just makes them all look the same.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I guess real quick, so the estimate includes the single gable proposal right now. So if you were to go, does not?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you were to go back to the, the double gable, that would change the estimate and
A little bit. I mean, that, that little section of the double gable, it's, you'd have to see an aerial. It doesn't go back, I don't know, maybe six feet, six, eight feet back. So you're really just building up the, you know, forming up the, the gable and
Behind it.
Yeah, behind it.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll call those.
This is the motion that, retaining the double gables and retain, and the downspout would be going down to the east.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Mr. Emmerich?
No.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
No.
Mrs. Erlich?
Is that my name?
Yes, yes. Mr. Tiderington?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
No.
Motion does pass.
Motion does pass.
Yes, four and three.
Okay, we resolved the first issue. The second issue is the, I'm sure I've described the removal of the report and the modification as shown on the rendering, correct?
Correct, yeah, let me switch right there.
Yes, correct, yeah.
So, so again, what, pointing to our rendering, what do you, what do we resolve?
It'll be the removal of the
The second story.
The second straight porch.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
And rebuild the first floor
Rebuild the first floor porch
First story porch.
And then recess back, so it's more proportional.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so which rendering are we, we've got like 100 different pictures here.
I think it's
You've got the original.
You've got the
I think it's the one that, Mr. Twist handed out.
With staple together.
It is, this one, right here. That's the one. So the first floor
Yeah, we have this one. Yeah.
Same thing, yeah. And I think it's included in our packet as well.
Of course, the double gable remains.
Right, but
Porch corners would
This first floor porch, you're saying that it's going to go back farther than it is right now?
No, I don't, what do you mean?
Back. So it's just basically the story of the first one
Just be reassessed back from the northwest corner.
Just would only come out if the gutter came down on this side.
Yeah, exactly.
So it's not going to be as deep?
Exactly.
It's going to, okay.
Yeah.
And not as deep.
Yeah, it would not come to the northeast corner, oh, I'm sorry, northwest corner of the, of the house.
But does it now?
No. There's, in your packet, there should be an existing photo.
It wouldn't come any farther north than it is now. It would just be, it wouldn't come out as far west as it does now. If you're rebuilding it, if you're pushing it towards the, the west wall so that it's more flush with the rest of the west elevation
Yeah, because right now, that porch, like the steps are not even, they're, they're not the same height, and then you have to step up to get into the first floor. So we would make it a little bit more accessible by rebuilding that whole first floor porch.
Sure, but the, the overhang, the eve, is not going to come out as far west as it does now. When you make those
I don't want to say that.
Well, then, that goes back to my confusion, what is really changing other than you want to rebuild and fix?
Well, you're removing, you're removing the second.
That second, I'm, I'm talking about this one, just something.
So does it come out to that corner right there?
Is anything changing as far as the, the dimensions of this, other than you're rebuilding it?
Patrick, a little
Look, because it's overhang a little bit here. It's not on the
So you're proposing it come forward a little bit?
Yeah, look, you can tell by the
Just a tad, yeah.
You can tell by
But it won't?
By the windows.
But it's going to come out
Well, there's a corner
It's going to come out west, just as far as
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the way it looks now.
Yeah.
Yes.
This is the way it looks now.
Yeah, the overhang is a little bit smaller. So I don't have it
Yes, I like it. I like it.
You're saying that it's going to come a little further towards Main Street, but you know, the other porch is at this window
In my actual thoughts, it has features.
Keeps the same width to the building, but it's still flush with it.
It's in the bay.
See, there's that corner of the building right here, it could come right
It'll be the
This is just trying to get
It stays back.
But you're going to, you're going to order to paint your building black.
So you're going to bring it out that way.
It's nice enough.
But you're not, you're not squeezing it towards the building more, it's still going to be as, as deep.
The same width, yeah, yeah.
Right.
And it's just, and it comes out for, for Main Street.
In the center of the window, which gives it those
Comes for this way.
And you're going to have these, you're going to keep those diagonal senses
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is it?
Lovely.
Is that the whole?
Yeah.
So I, I think I heard you guys, I'm going to make a proposal to remove the second floor porch and, well, and then to repair or replace the first floor patio where it's not extending all the way to the end of the, front of the house.
Yeah, it won't extend all the way to the front. It will match the rendering and the elevation. So it'll be, the first floor porch would be reconstructed, not exact, but roughly the dimensions of the existing porch, first floor porch.
So that'd be my, my second piece is, is the same dimensions on the first floor porch, remove the second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
So, yeah, I, I guess I'm confused because you're saying that it's not, it's not going to be the exact dimensions and your motion is the exact dimension.
Yeah.
So
I thought you said similar, or
Close to it, but
You may say exactly.
As proposed.
As proposed, on the, on the first floor patio.
And you know which drawing it is, Tim, for sure?
I do not because I don't have that drawing.
And I don't either.
There's one in our packet. But I can get one, I can get one from, Michael, give me one.
Is it the 04?
Yeah.
04 drawing?
04, I don't know what age that is, I think it's not
What'd you say, 04?
19 or 18.
04. West Old Age.
But they're still
Yeah, they'll make
If you look at the existing
Does that show
Okay.
You know, the porch extensions under this one.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I got your copy. Okay. Okay. I mean, it's, it's more or less the same dimensions. It may be off by 10 inches in one direction, maybe in another, but we're not, it's not eight feet, one way or the other.
Be careful, we just had a problem with a couple inches.
Okay.
Go ahead.
The decision, it's a question for staff, and I, I'm sure you answered this at the last meeting, but it was so long ago. The second story porch, is that, is that called out in the OHI specifically similar to the twin towers?
So the porches, the porches are because they're identifiable feature with the Queen Anne style. When you look up the Queen Anne style, it talks about having an abundance of decorative elements, which I think we all agree this house has. It talks about having a large partial or full with porches, which it did have at one time and then was retracted. And then it talks about decorative spindle work on porches and gable trims. So because of that being called out, the forces are on the OHI form, and because that's a form here, that's why we initially, and would still probably recommend denial of the removal of that second porch, knowing that now we did get some evidence, I think you guys have that some damage was there, but because it's on the OHI form, to stay true to our design standards, we would still make the, the recommendation to keep and repair that porch.
Lot more comprehensive an answer than I anticipated. We did not rehearse this. But that second story porch is not specifically listed separately on the OHI, or it is? As an architectural feature?
Right, is it more a general statement versus a specific statement? Patrick, is that what you're asking?
Basically.
Yeah.
More the detail.
Yeah, it's more of a general statement, yeah.
And I have a question. So at the time, that is just decorative, it's not usable. It, yeah, so much damage
I would not recommend going out on that porch.
I just wanted to get that on the record.
You're too tall, Wendy.
Yeah, that's true. You sold the photo, Jim, yeah.
Okay, if I could get clarification on the motion, is the motion to approve the side porch as proposed by the petitioner?
Yes, the, the first floor. First, first floor. And then the removal of the second.
And removal of the second. Okay. And believe we have a second, correct?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second for the removal of the second door porch and the modifications as shown on U number four of West Elevation. We'll call it that, please.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiderington?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Emmerich?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we have an item for the certificate of appropriate, 10 West Main Street, refacing existing wall sign for Wyman's Coffee and Chocolate. The reports are-
Yes, the applicant requests the planning commission to review the installation of the new wall sign for Wyman's Coffee and Chocolate for 10 West Main Street, property zone B3, Central Business District. OHI form states the building was originally built in eighteen seventy-eight, so a high Victorian Italian eight with heavy bracketed and decorative stone cornices. The applicant proposes to install a sign measuring fifteen feet by two feet, or thirty square feet. This is a reface of an existing sign. The sign will have three dimensional lettering and will comply with the design manual. It will have a white background with black lettering. Staff recommends approval for the proposed sign based on the following. The sign complies with our design manual and the sign code and there are similar, similar colors and material found in other areas of the district. That concludes the report.
Thank you, sir. Any comments?
So the existing sign is just, I feel bad, I can't remember what it is, it's just a flat sign and-
Yeah, and I believe it says Wyman's Chocolate and Coffee, but they're switching it now. On the east side, it had their emblem, the W with the circle around it. It's really the only difference.
Yeah, this is a different typeface, I think they updated their branding.
Right, yeah, correct, yep.
And the current background of the sign is already white.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, what is the desire of permission?
Make a motion, approve is presented.
I second.
Motion by any?
Yes.
Go, Paul, please.
Mr. Walkie?